Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, being held on Monday, October twenty first, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M here in the District Administration Building. After the pledge of allegiance tonight, I'd like everybody to just take a quick moment of silence and remember Gary Van De Werke Senior, who was retired school bus driver from our district to pass the line. And now it should have this memorized. All right, moving on to our next little group business. We have the privilege of the floor. Persons wishing to speak are first identified by the president that identify themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify as single spokesperson. How much shall we brief and concise, but only not exceed four minutes in length per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the board president. Each privilege of a floor session is not to exceed thirty two minutes in length. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. The board will not permit in public sessions discussions involving individual district personnel by name or by title or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and or concerns to the superintendent through our regular business hours. While speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of purpose will not be tolerated. We have Lisa Zaluski.
Hi.
Good evening.
It's the Luski.
Luski.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Lisa Zaluski. I have three children in the Goshen Central School District, ages fourteen, eleven, and eight. I'm here to raise an alarm that the school board must take action in updating the language in the school's code of conduct to include specific language outlining the areas of Goshen that are part of the Goshen School District and where the code is enforceable. My eight-year-old daughter was victim of an assault on school property during dismissal from G I S on Friday, October eighteenth. As she was walking home, as she was walking alone down the sidewalk on McNally Street, she heard kids running behind her. She stopped, stepped aside to let the three boys pass her. As she was stopped, one of the boys, who was completely unprovoked, slapped my daughter hard across her left cheek. The three boys ran away laughing. A friend who witnessed the attack came over to hug my daughter and walk the rest of the way down the hill with her. My daughter ran to my car in tears with a visible red mark on her cheek, which I photographed. I emailed Dr. Wentworth immediately. He got back to me that day and told me that the school could not do anything since the incident didn't occur on school property. However, as the weekend went on, I found myself comforting my daughter, who was confused and scared why something so violent would happen to her. I myself am a forty-two-year-old woman from Brooklyn, no less, and I have never experienced the type of violence that my daughter had to experience endure at the age of eight. I thought to myself, how unfair that this boy should receive no consequences. This caused me to look into this incident further. First, I have an ongoing inquiry with the residents of McNally Street to get video evidence of the assault. Second, as I was speaking to the McNally residents, I found out that the Goshen Central School District is the one who is responsible for the maintenance of that sidewalk, therefore making it part of the school district. I even verified this information with the director of Building and Browns, James McGardham. He told me that the custodial staff of G I S maintained, plowed, and salted the entire sidewalk on McNally Street from G I S all the way down to the crosswalk on Scottstown Avenue. Third, I filed out a FOIA request from the Village of Goshen Town Hall, requesting any documentation relating to the agreement between the village and the school district pertaining to the sidewalk on McNally Street. I know that an I M A was completed regarding the sidewalk, and I'm waiting for the village legal department to give me my requested copy that was signed by Superintendent Curtis Coates, which brings me to why I'm here tonight. It seems that the school district has been negligent with keeping the sidewalk on McNally a safe place for walkers. The sidewalk was completed in two thousand twenty-two. How many incidents have occurred on that walk where parents have been told by uninformed administration that their child isn't on school property and that no disciplinary action can take place? With the knowledge that the Goshen School District is in fact responsible for the sidewalk on McNally, any incidents that occur at dismissal on that street should be handled using the disciplinary measures outlined in the Goshen Student Code of Conduct. So I'm asking you to consider three changes. One, administrators must be made fully aware of what property and streets are part of the school district and those areas need to be supervised, whether with personnel or cameras. Two, that there be clear set of consequences that would limit a child from remaining a walker if there are multiple offenses on the sidewalk that belongs to the school, especially for reports of violence, similar to being banned from a school bus. Three, update the code of conduct with specific language that outlines which streets and properties are part of the Goshen Central School District. The amount of effort that I had to put into getting justice for my daughter is unfair. This knowledge should be easily accessible to Goshen School District families. Families must have clear knowledge of when their child is on school property and when the code of conduct is enforceable. These negligent oversights must be updated and corrected. Thank you. I've never been here before. Any questions or?
Thank you very much for sharing. At the end of the report before what's happened is time for a listen. Time for the superintendent to make notes. And then generally what happens is the board will have updates from the superintendent on uncertain matters in the future. So thank you for sharing. That's usually what happens.
Does someone contact me after you guys?
Usually we get updates from Dr. Coats and things that he hears, he then takes action on or sends that to other people in districts who should be taking action. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, President's Report. There's not too much new to report tonight. Just policy, policy, policy. Ongoing policy meetings are happening all the time. We're up to about two a month now going through sections of policy. That's the only thing I have to report to everybody this evening. All right, next we have our student representative report, Francesca Ciccaro.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So this past week, there were many events. At night school, it was homecoming week. The week concluded with a thrilling victory against F D R High School during the Friday night football game. Celebration continued with the homecoming dance on Saturday night, where students had a fantastic time. There is an upcoming college fair of twenty nine for students to talk to colleges and have the opportunity to explore different educational paths. Where it will be was actually today for students going to Chester Academy, where they participated in activities like yoga and dancing to a drug-free lifestyle. At the middle school, some of the eighth grade students enjoyed a Friday night dance this past week with fun and. At intermediate school, the class of twenty thirty-two celebrated with a holiday dance also on Friday night. There's also an upcoming book fair. The school will host a book fair next week, offering students a chance to explore and purchase new books. Lastly, at Scottstown Avenue, this week is kindness week with activities encouraged positive actions and kindness among students. And on Saturday, the school will host a trick-or-treat parade of fun in the same manner for students to celebrate Saturday Halloween. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Francesca. All right, next we have our legislative update.
No, it's not. Probably the next meeting beginning of March.
Thank you. Then moving on, do we have any other board member committee reports anybody would like to share? Okay, this evening there are a few policies that are up for second reading. School district records, school district records regulations, the executive student member of the Board of Education, and the disclosure of law. If everybody had an opportunity to look at those. All right, great. So we'll just keep moving forward. On to the superintendent's report, Dr. Curtis Coates.
Thank you very much. So before we get into the report, I just want to take a moment to speak to the fact that it is the end of school board's recognition week, and many of us often forget that for as many times as our Board of Education comes together, meetings they have, we'll have to speak of the policy meetings, facilities meetings, accounts events they go to, but these are volunteer positions and there's a great amount of time and a great amount of dedication that goes into the work that happens to allow our teachers, our staff, our administrators, everyone here in the district to serve all of our students here in the district. So on behalf of our teachers, our staff, our administration, I ask Ms. Lammer and Mr. Carter for some help. We have some gifts as a sign of our appreciation for all of your dedication to our districts.
Just a word of warning from the wait. Don't use the handle because I don't want the background. Thanks, sir. Very much.
Not to get. Truly, thank you for the time and the commitment and the dedication to give to our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one non-agenda item, and it is in your packet tonight. Last week, we did discuss a reserve plan and wanted to just revisit that conversation and talk about what the options are again with the Board of Education. As we had discussed during our last full audit, the auditor had brought up the fact that the potential of our tax surcharge area reserve would be more than the current liabilities that are on the books. But there are some new filings that the district is aware of that we're watching very closely. So essentially, as we talked about last time, there are three real options. Number one, option one is to do nothing and currently leave the money where it is. You do have that option again with the caveat that potentially it will show up in an auditor's note again. And down the road, there could be, if there is a comptroller's order, an order from the comptroller to say, listen, your liabilities are a little bit higher than, lower than what you have funded. We really need you either to move or spend that money. That's basically option number one. Option number two is to consider moving the amount that this Lammer and, that Lammer and I discussed with you last week. And option number three would be to move more or less than the amount that's in there. That is based on the current funding that exists in the reserve accounts. Separate and aside, so that we meet our four percent obligation from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. If you look at the recommended increases, that's what's there to increase our funding and our reserves based on surplus from last year. And I just want to point out also where that excess fund balance above the four percent came from really was driven largely from last year by interest income that we received in our reserve or based on the money that we currently have in the reserves. And also, we received, we had filed a year, year and a half ago to FEMA based on some of the costs that were eligible for COVID. And right at the end of the last fiscal year, we received about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars directly from FEMA. Otherwise, we largely spent our budget from last year. The surplus that we see is largely driven by those two sources. So again, no vote is required tonight. I don't know if I missed anything that we should address, but we're just looking for direction. If you're comfortable with the reserve plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, we can go ahead and prepare that resolution for the next meeting and have that ready to make that transfer. But in regards to the tax surcharge reserve and the other potential move, just seeking some input and some feedback from the board on what to do. Again, Ms. Lammer and I can answer any additional questions on that as well.
Just to clarify again, what was the total amount that we saw when we were over in this fund that they're recommending now?
She said we needed to compare it to our settlements, which would be about thirty percent, thirty-eight to forty. And that amount is in here. It degrades to two point nine million. Now, again, we didn't increase the reserve for the amount, sorry, of tax certs that we received this year, which will go on the books at the end of June twenty.
Is there a timeline to move that as well? Because Dr. Coates had mentioned that one option is that they could stay here. They might come back and it would show up on a board. Would there be any type of mind? They believe in that money?
No, they would just mark it in our management letter that it is still over potentially overfunded. That would show up on next year's audit for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Things can happen between now and the end of June, emergencies where we may have to dip into it. So that's why it's nice to also have it there if we were to blow a boiler or anything extremely expensive like that.
And the one caveat that I didn't speak of also, once you move money into the capital reserve fund, you do require a public vote to be able to remove that money out versus where when it's in the tax surcharge area, you do have more liquid access to the money for emergencies. That's what I'm just pointing out.
And just reminding, what percentage would we act for, which I'd say ninety-four percent, one hundred?
Well, I would say a hundred and thirty percent. She says thirty percent.
But we do have some new liabilities that we know have just been filed as well, some of which we are a little bit concerned could be.
I know we're not voting tonight, but I, I, we don't have an audit coming up. Right. You know, so leaving it there to kind of see how the year plays out at the time, like Dr. Coates said, once it goes into capital, you know, it becomes a voter approval where if we had a true emergency, they have to, you know, figure some things out. You know, we're hit for the administration to be kind of strapped as far as what they could do with that. That's just, that's just my opinion. And then I know we're not voting on it, but it would be nice to wait and see when those other tax certs come on and.
And if we have more settlements between now and the end of June, that also could be a driving factor as to what we should keep in there as a balance.
Yeah. I could move either way. I just, I just know once it goes in capital, it becomes a little bit more restrictive about what you can do. Or all the reserves and.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's at this point. Let's see what, how everything shakes out, what's coming up.
Yeah, I, I, I agree as well. I think, you know, we're always talking about capital work that needs to be done. I'd like to see a little bit more of a clear established plan of which projects we're going to go after. It, let's just say we did have safely the two point nine. That was something that we could use. I'd like to know what we're going to use for first before we move it over and then start the raw darts, hard board. Follow our five-year plan.
I would agree. I mean, God, that's the question that I love. So is the, you know, about losing interest on that money. As long as there's no timelines and if there's no claims later in the year. Definitely for five-year plans, making the fact that we're using more, got increased taxes and.
So just for clarity, are we comfortable with the twenty-three, twenty-four recommended increases? And then we'll leave the other balances as is? Because the four percent pieces is something obviously cannot have any more than four percent of your previous year's budget carrying in your fund balance. You are typically, forgive me if I'm wrong, typically supposed to move those into appropriate reserve accounts. Are we comfortable with the recommendations that are there for the fund balance in excess of twenty-three, twenty-four to move into those accounts?
That's, that's like, you're restricted to that one percent.
Correct. That, that the state will come down and say you're in excess.
Okay. All right, very good. Prepare the resolution for the next meeting. I wanted to provide an update on where the special education program analysis stands. Last week, I received correspondence from the provider. They wanted to give one more opportunity for feedback from those that did not have an opportunity to meet with them face to face, either at the end of the summer, at the beginning of the school year. They're preparing, preparing one last survey to go out electronically to all families of those students with disabilities. Once that is done, they're going to finalize the report. They'll have a draft version ready for us to review. I anticipate that to be completed based on their feedback probably within the next thirty days. Erie Street Park, we have an opportunity to have our final meeting with those that were interested to come in to talk about the district's portion of the Erie Street Park property. I did share with the board that we gave some codified surveys for people to fill out. Largely those that were present that chose to fill out, and even those that were not present at the last meeting and emailed in, largely would like to see the board move forward with a referendum to consider the village acquiring that piece of property. Again, as we've discussed all along, the intent was, because this would be a municipal to municipal corporation transfer, that the only thing that the village would be responsible for covering the cost of that was the cost of the vote. The village is aware of that. The village has scheduled their next village board meeting on the twenty-eighth. If the village board adopts and accepts the agreement that legal council, so legal council for the village and legal council for the district have been working on a reimbursement agreement to cover the costs, then I would recommend to the board that you move forward, set the date, set the resolution, adopt the secret to be able to move forward with setting the date for the vote. But again, happy to answer any questions. I have the package of information here from our meetings. Any other feedback that you said that the board would want to give so that we can quantify this and be prepared to move forward if the village board adopts the proposed agreement?
That mean all the timelines, if we wait for them?
So essentially, because the village board does not have a meeting until the twenty-eighth, this would push the vote into January. If, if we were to adopt it immediately after, it would require a special meeting of this board. You then, based on the timeline, would be into the Christmas holiday, and that would just be a horrendous time to have a vote. I don't, I just don't think we'd be able to do that. So it would be sometime in January.
You preemptively place our votes, say even if everybody's ready, say if the village has their meeting on the twenty-eighth and they agree to those terms, it could go live then.
So I did ask the legal counsel that question. It is a calculated risk. If the village starts to question and or pull off or not agree to the terms and conditions, we've told the clerk to move forward to set legal timelines and everything would have to be redone again. And my recommendation based on the feedback that I got from the council was to wait for the board to officially adopt the terms and conditions that we should post. So once I hear from them next week, I'll be able to set that forward. I wanted to share two pieces of good news, one of which we've already spoken about. The district, as I had shared with you sometime before, our scholar athletes had, from Goshen High School, had been termed a scholar athlete school distinction for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We were one of one hundred and fourteen schools in New York State with over twelve hundred public and private schools to be able to receive that. That means that all twenty-nine of our teams in every season for the year received the scholar athlete designation. That means that you have to have an average of ninety or above. Seventy-five percent of your entire squad has to have the average of ninety or above. So it's a great award. I wanted the board to have an opportunity to see it, to pass it around, the certificate that we received from the state. This is certainly a notable achievement for our scholar athletes and one that we would want to celebrate. So just wanted the board to have an opportunity to see it and share it with the whole of it. Finally, our district is a member of the School Study Council, Mid Hudson School Study Council, which represents six counties throughout the Mid Hudson region, Ulster, Orange, Rockland, Westchester, Putnam, and Duchess. And each year, school districts have an opportunity to make nominations for recognition for awards for excellence. And this year, along with Mr. St. Lawrence, we wrote a recommendation for Miss Christina Olivera, who is the executive assistant in the athletic office. And I'm pleased to let you all know that she actually received the award for excellence, to which Mr. St. Lawrence and his wife, Mr. Kelly, Procel, and the Dubraskys, we were all able to attend her award ceremony this past week, where she received her award up here at the barn. Again, it was a true testament to a person that when you have an opportunity to speak with her, a person that when you see the work that she does, it's always yes, it's always with a smile, we'll get that done. And it was really a nice opportunity to recognize her hard work throughout the county. We put some recognition out on social media too with Section Nine, picked it up and gave their congratulations to her as well. So it was, it was something that the time was well spent. I was grateful for the staff that were able to come and support her at her recognition ceremony that night. My report for this week, sir. I appreciate the time. Thank you. That's my report for this week, sir. I appreciate the talk. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Coles. Moving on now to our assistant superintendent for business report, Mr. Lorraine Van Hup, Van Pot Lammer.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, tonight in your board packets, we do have the claims auditing reports. The claims auditor reviews every invoice and every purchase order for the district before the checks are released. And this is a summary of the first quarter for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the end of the year warrant in June. Our tax collection, uh, through the end of September, we are at sixty-eight percent of the total tax warrants. Last year, at this time, it was at seventy-seven percent. The collections were made through the end of September. And a large reason, reason for this disparity or difference is last year, the thirtieth ended on the weekend and many people put their checks in the mail on Friday. So we got them sooner and were able to process them. So we could capture that on September thirtieth. Whereas this year on Monday, they waited longer. So we did not get those deposits in until later in the week of the beginning of October. So that is a reason for that. Um, we did the internal audit, RFP. I spoke about that at the last meeting. And I have assessed those and we received two, one from Cooper Aries, who was our current internal auditor, and another from RBT, which is another group. I sent out five of them and received two back. I listed the differences in, or the amounts that they proposed in the report. For twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, Cooper Aries is proposing six thousand dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six school year is sixty-two fifty, and the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year is sixty-five hundred. Is their proposal for the risk assessment only? RBT's risk assessment, it stays level for the three years that they're proposing, but it is for twenty-one thousand five hundred. And then we have to move on from the risk assessment. You typically will focus on a part of the risk assessment that they find and it becomes a focus audit. And their range of um, fees are about sixty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred for Cooper Aries as compared to eleven thousand five hundred for RBT. So there is a big difference in those. Um, RFPs, and I would like to recommend that we accept Cooper Aries's RFP if it is agreeable to the board at the next meeting. So we can move forward with the agenda. Thank you. Um, so, and for our financial reports this month, we have September in the board packets. Our expenses in the month of September were five point one million dollars. And this is a increase over the summer, as I had spoken during the summer about the payroll. It is less because our ten-month staff is not on board yet until September. So our increases, our expenses do increase as of September. And they are five point one million dollars. We received revenues, LaRue A, one point one million dollars. Voces Aid, which is actually for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, it becomes irreceivable because the year was closed. And that's nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We did receive some pilots. We have Walkill Realty, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Dana Distributors, fifty-nine thousand dollars, and GAM, G I M, for a little over thirty-one thousand dollars. And our interest revenue for the month of September was eighty thousand and fifty-six dollars. We've spent a total of eleven million dollars through the end of September and we've earned sixty-two point nine million dollars in revenue through the end of September. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And moving on to our assistant superintendent, curriculum instruction personnel and technology report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Good evening, everyone. So Francesca did a wonderful job of speaking about the kickoff ceremony today held at Chester. Um, Dr. Coles and I just wanted to say thank you to Kathy O'Hara, the superintendent of Chester, and her team for hosting us. We had a great day today, joined by um, many of our representatives from Gosham High School and Gosham Middle School, and also ten students. Um, Stephen Hill, somewhat local from Suffolk, delivered a pretty powerful and appropriate message today for all the students there. You know, spoke about his struggles, of course, with addiction and his ability to overcome. Um, and spoke about the great successes that he's having right now, which I think is a really important message. So we created the awareness and then, of course, the ability to overcome, which is important. Great day, full of events for the students. We very much enjoyed the end, which we would say is the hypothetical passing of the torch. So we received a little recognition on stage with our students and some of our teachers there. And we received the, the burning bush, which you'll see planted now in front of the high school for uh, just about a year, I would imagine, because we will be hosting Red Ribbon uh, next year. So all in all, a great day for our students, a great day for the district. And we look forward to working with ADAC, um, and other representatives throughout our community and county as we host this next year. Uh, moving on, last week, we had an opportunity to send Ms. Carmen and two of her representatives from her social studies department to Voces. Uh, so they, they began the process of going through a five-session, thirty total hour um, professional development for the SEAL of Civic readiness. So we're looking to bring that into the middle school, at which point uh, our students in seventh and eighth grade will be able to earn at least one point toward uh, the six that are mandatory to earn SEAL of Civic readiness. So, um, you know, they're going to get ready to go through the actual planning, planning process, develop a deep understanding of the SEAL and bring that down into our middle school. So we're, we're quite pleased with that. And also, Dr. Coles and I continue to work on our November conference date. Um, keep in mind, we do have Scholastic coming to continue that work. Uh, and we are working on a few other items for professional. And that'll wrap up my report for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Shannon, Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Board of Education approves the consent and has presented all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Now we need a motion to approve the policy update second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions of retirees. John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming, renaming, readoptions of policies added presented. Favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve minutes. Ashley and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Board of Education approves the minutes of the October seventh, twenty twenty-four review. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to accept recommendations of the Committee of Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Scott. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school-aged students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSA, and Committee on Special Education, CSE, during the period October first, twenty twenty-four, during including October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Directs the district to arrange for the provision of such special education programs and services to such preschool and school-aged students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSA and CSE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will you? Need a motion to approve the lead evaluator for qualifications. John. Be resolved that pursuant to the requirements of Education Law Section three zero one two dash eight in Part thirty dash two point nine of the region's rules, the following persons have completed all of the required training as lead evaluator for classroom teachers twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. First, Coles and Nancy Webber. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to accept the annual fire inspection report and certificates by Voces. Brett and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the public school fire safety reports as presented on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. It is noted that any non-conformances that were indicated at the time of inspection were corrected and new certificate of occupancy has been issued. Additionally, it is noted that legal notice will be published at least once in newspapers of record and that the fire departments with jurisdiction covering school facilities have also been notified of given access to inspection reports. Those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to vote on NISBA Area Nine Director. Vote for one. John, Shannon. All these school board members have been nominated by at least five member school boards to be candidates for the Area Nine Director of the New York State School Board Association. The new director will fill the second year of the current director's term, January first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as well as the new two-year term, from January first, twenty-sixth until December thirty-first, twenty-seventh. Each member school board acting in a regular or special meeting is entitled to cast vote for one candidate for its representative area. All those in favor of John Burns? Couple of eyes. All those in favor of John Williams?
Aye.
All right. Raise, you have to pick one of the two candidates. So uh, just raise your hand if you would like to vote for John Williams. What's your recommendation?
Yeah, speak quickly.
Yeah.
John, you're talking about the Johns?
Yeah, so, yes, John Williams is also the leader of the Oxba group as well. So um, he's right in Milltown. He's a great guy. I feel like he does a really good job leading that group, so. For what it's worth, I would like to throw my recommendation on John Williams.
Second recommendation.
I would like to put my vote on John Williams as well.
I would too.
I agree as well. We sent the letter. It's for John. So thank you for the clarification there. All right. Just wanted to fill in his name. Be resolved, Gosham Central School District, Board of Education looks for John Williams to fill the position of Area Nine Director of the New York State School Board Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
It's a lot of Johns.
All right. John. John. All right. We need a motion to approve the agreement for services, agribusiness, child development. A B C D. Scott. Actually. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves entering into an agreement with agribusiness, child development, A B C D, to provide services for preschool students who will be transitioning into Gosham Central School District effective October tenth, twenty twenty-four, or October tenth, twenty twenty-seven. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorized, superintendent, executive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right. I'm assuming we do not have any additional. All right. Are there any board member issues that we would like to bring up to discuss this evening? All right. All's quiet on the board phones. Need a motion to move to the second session. John, Bill. Be resolved, Board of Education is determined to agree with this session with the intent not to convene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history, particularly the first member of proposed tax surcharge litigation. Favor?
Aye.
Post.